Okay, trustee Buchanan. Okay, thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The Board of Education is meeting electronically due to the gathering size restrictions as delineated in MCL 333.2253. The public may participate in the meeting by joining the Zoom link listed above. Board members may be contacted through the emails listed below. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Upon prior request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. Requests for special assistance may be sent to liz.goodwin@bentonharborareaschools.org. I call this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. And we will start with the first point of business, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I know that we are kind of always a little bit off when we say it, but if you guys can unmute with me and we can go through that and then we can get started. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll for attendance?
President Robinson.
Present.
Vice President Bradley.
Present.
Secretary Triplet, present. Treasurer Creighton.
Present.
Trustee Buchanan. Trustee Bowens.
Present.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Present. Mr. Triplet. Scoop, did you hear me?
I didn't hear you, but I have you marked present, trustee Buchanan.
All right.
Okay, so next we have approval of the agenda. Our agenda is really light today. We have four business, which includes rescheduling of the April board meeting dates, selection of a third-party firm, and then we also have a closed session at the end of the meeting. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second or support?
I support.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by trustee Rocket Martin. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda? Hearing none, secretary Triplet, can you please, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just like to make mention that I do have a concern again to go into closed session, and I would like that to be recorded for the record.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll for the approval of the agenda? I believe you called me present.
President, yeah, President Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
No.
Who are you calling, Secretary Triplet?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Buchanan, she said yes. Trustee Bowens.
Yes.
And trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so next we have public comment on agenda items. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak, public comment on agenda items and public comment, or open public comment rather. Per policy 016.0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz.goodwin@bentonharborareaschools.org. Is there anyone on the line for public comment on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we're going to proceed to the first order of business, which is the rescheduling of our April board meetings. Dr. Townsend, can you do the favor of reading staff report? B1, BB1, rather.
Sure, scroll it up just a little bit, Liz, so I can see the whole thing. All right. Reason for board consideration, the previously approved dates from the January 12, 2021 meeting have scheduling conflicts. It is necessary to adjust the meeting dates for the month of April 2021. Facts and analysis, the meeting dates for April 2021 would be changed as follows. April 6, 2021 work session canceled. April 13, 2021 regular session canceled. April 13, rescheduling of a work session, and the April 20th regular session. Policy references 0165.2. Recommended action is that the Benton Harbor Area School Board of Education votes to approve the meeting dates changed for April 2021.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept staff report BB1?
I make a motion to accept staff report BB1?
All right, is there a second or support?
I second, I second it.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by trustee Buchanan. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the change? So essentially, we are pushing our scheduled meetings back a week, having the work session scheduled for April 13, and the regular board meeting scheduled for April 20. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding that adjustment? And just for clarification, the adjustment was made due to spring break being scheduled during the work session week. Okay, hearing none, secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll?
Yes, President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next item of business on the agenda is selection of a third-party firm. We were previously provided proposals for three particular options for a third-party firm. The options were Lightman and Biden Linger, Recon Management, and for Terrace Capital Advisor. Can I have a motion to select a third-party firm at their contracted rate for the matter?
I move that we select a third-party person.
Or, did you have a particular person in mind?
Um, I was thinking of, I think her name was Rebecca.
Biden Linger?
Yes, Rebecca Dilinger.
Biden Linger? Okay, was there a support? Was there a support for that motion?
I support the motion.
So the motion has been made by trustee Rocket Martin and supported by trustee Buchanan, that we select Rebecca Lightman Biden Linger S Y P L L C at her contracted rate. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns or discussion for that particular person?
Yes, President Robinson, I did, what was your contracted rate for those services? Can we discuss that?
300. Yep, it was provided in the email, it was 300 per hour.
Okay, okay, I didn't even see it there, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Or discussion? Secretary Triplet, can you call the roll?
Someone, I don't, I don't know if that's in technology that keeps muting my, my computer. I can mute and unmute my own computer. Thank you for your support. President Robinson?
Yeah, did you have, you didn't have a comment, sir? You were offset.
For me?
Yeah, you're just calling roll right now for vote?
Is, is that what you asked me to do, right?
Yeah, I was making, you indicated you were muted, I'm making sure you didn't have, you were, you were able to make input if you needed to.
No.
Okay, okay, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Mine was yes to secretary Triplet, I'm not sure if you heard, if I actually placed the vote, so it'll be yes for me.
Yes, I have, I have President Robinson, yes, Vice President Bradley, yes, Treasurer Creighton? Treasurer Creighton? Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes. What's that, he called it, it's kind of hard to hear him.
He's calling you now. It's you now.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes. Could you hear me?
Trustee, yes, trustee Creighton, did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And secretary Triplet? Yes. Motion carried.
Okay, so moving right along on the agenda, next we have old business. Is there any old business that needs to be discussed today? Moving right along, we have new bit, I'm sorry, just want to give a second just to make sure. Next, we have new business, is there any new business to be discussed today? Okay, next we have open public comment, and I apologize, I know I just read this, but I like to be consistent and make sure everyone is clear. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are three areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak, public comment on agenda items only, public comment on the extended learning plan, and open public comment. Per policy 01, I'm sorry, there's two areas, public comment on the agenda items, which we've already had, and then open public comment, which is where we are now. Per policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comment by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as your president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz.goodwin@bentonharborareaschools.org. Is there anyone on the line for open public comment currently?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, President Robinson. My name is Elmore Gavin, and at this time, I'm just represented as a conscious citizen and resident and parent. Um, let's see, I don't see the timer going, but I am concerned because I'm also a former school board member, and I remember when we had the partnership agreements, I remember what that was like being involved in those partnership agreement meetings. It was obligatory, it was a form of bullying from the state of Michigan, and the office that had much to do with that setup of our schools was an office that I believe your, you have an employee who was, who was a part of that office. Fast forward, the school district, the Board of Education was forced to hire a CEO and turn over all of their rights to that CEO, who we later found was strategically going to turn our district into a charter school, and they were looking to dissolve our high school. When he found out that legally the school reform office was about to be shut down, he then hired Dr. Shelton and made her the turnaround specialist of the high school. I am greatly concerned, nothing personal, I'm greatly concerned about the moves that have been made strategically since she's been here. I don't know exactly why our leadership has allowed someone who has been, you know, strategically placed to head the entire district in that way, only answering to the superintendent. We have several people who will have written statements to this effect, willing to discuss the damage and the harm that has been caused, programs that have been closed behind this, and I just want to say that we fought very hard to hold on to our district, but if our board and our administration is not willing to protect us from the inside out, our efforts are going to, again, be null and void. So I just would hope that, you know, whatever personal issues people may have with me, there are a lot of people who have been harmed by this strategic move, and I ask that you would conduct some type of investigation into the people, the amazing people and the amazing programs that have been harmed by the strategic position of having someone who's been over all of the partnership schools, black schools across the state. Why would that person be here in our city causing more harm? Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the line for public comment? And Ms. Gavin, thank you for providing your comment this evening. Is there anyone else on the line for open public comment?
Yeah, I'm a parent, my name is Angel Anderson.
Okay, you can proceed, Ms. Anderson, go ahead.
I'm sorry, yes, I was listening to what Ms. Gavin was saying, and that is, that is a good point that she brought up, and I would like for them to also investigate that also. I would like, I would like to have more information on that person that she was speaking about, because if that person is here really doing what she says that they are doing, then that's a problem. That needs to be fixed, or, you know, taken care of quickly, because that will push us back as a district. And that's all I wanted to say right now.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, is there anyone else for public comment, open public comment?
President Robinson, I would need to have the addresses for those people that spoke, please.
Okay, Ms. Gavin? Yes, Ms. Gavin, can you provide, did you hear Ms. Liz?
Yes, I will submit that to her via email.
Okay, you also have the option of chat?
I will do that, thank you so much for that option, appreciate you.
Okay, Ms. Anderson? Did you hear Ms. Goodwin's request, so we can get that added for a minute?
No, I didn't, she called off.
Okay, we, she was asking for the address information and whether, I don't, I believe you indicated you're not representing other, any other entity, but your address information, you've already listed your comments, if you feel comfortable, you can provide it now, or you can message that to Ms. Goodwin. And it's Liz Goodwin?
Okay.
In chat?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next on, is there anyone else for open public comment? Okay, so we're going to proceed with superintendent announcements and comments, and just for clarification, for those public members that are present, we have a closed session that we may be entering at the end of the meeting, so we have our public comments, superintendent comments, and board member comments prior to that meeting, so that you all do not have to wait until we finish that for adjournment. So we're going to proceed with our normal course of business, and then after that, we're going to take vote to see if we enter closed session. So Dr. Townsend, you're next.
Hello, everybody.
Your announcements are coming.
Hello, everybody, this is Dr. Townsend, Superintendent Benson Harbor Area Schools. I'd like to announce that today was the first day of in-person learning for our young people. It was a great day, I had an opportunity not to greet all of our young people as they come to the high school. I've visited every single classroom, talked with teachers, administrators, all staff members within the building. Today was a great day, it was a sight to behold, and I'm very excited for the opportunity to take our board members on the tour of our high school while our young people are in person. That concludes my superintendent announcements, go Tigers.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend, today I am going to begin with trustee Buchanan. Are you able to unmute and provide your board member comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
I sure can. Yes, ma'am, we're on board, announcements and comments, go ahead.
I would like to say good afternoon to all the board members and the people that's online, and keep praying for us, and we do better, and we should listen to everyone's opinions, that they have to say about our district, because we, we are, we are a strong district, and we want to keep it like that, and our kids are the most important part of this district, to give them an education, and that's what they need, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, trustee Buchanan, next we're going to have trustee Bowens. Trustee Bowens, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this Zoom stuff is a little weird, I'll be glad when we could have worked, I mean, full meeting. Um, good afternoon, I just want to say, I'm excited to hear how the first day at school went. Some of the teachers and citizens and staff have been reaching out to me, I've been following up with your concerns and making sure the board is addressing them, so you are not invisible to me. I will want to, I do want to make this known clear and simple, I will not be bullied by people that have resigned or stepped aside. I will not be forced, and I won't tolerate it either. On that note, on April 4th, we will be having our community-wide Easter egg at Union Field, and we invite you all to come out and join us, and that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Bowens, next we have trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes, I too would like to give a shout out to those students at the high school for their first day of in-person learning. I hope it was enjoyable for them, and that we'll be able to, you know, do that until they, those seniors graduate in June, and even going into next year, only time will tell. I'd also like to give a shout out to Fair Plains East Elementary School for inviting me to come and read with the students, read for the students. It was very nice and pleasurable, I was back in my element, and I enjoyed it, and the kids did too, I'm sure, so, yes, a great shout out to Fair Plains East Elementary School.
Thank you, trustee Rocket Martin, next we're going to have treasurer Creighton, board member announcements and comments.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, I just want to thank our staff and our administrators for being courageous and opening the high school. I know that on the county level, our numbers kind of are rising, and so I just pray that everyone is following the CDC guidelines and protecting themselves and trying to keep each other safe. I would like to thank the two parents for their, they encourage you to continue to come to our meetings and let us know, we are your voice, and when you have questions, concerns, welcome you, I am thankful that, you know, we have our parents, and you know that, that you all are entrusted in us with your children, and I look forward to the response to what's going on, to see if there's anything that we can do to continue to support teaching and learning at Benton Harbor High School and all throughout our district, and that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you, treasurer Creighton, next we have secretary Triplet. You're a little bit broken, sir, you're unmuted, but you're a little bit broken when you start to speak.
Yes, I said, thank you.
We can't hear you, but what I'm going to do, if it's okay with you, is I'm going to call you and allow you to make your comments via cell phone through my speaker.
Can you?
Yeah, mute your computer, and then I'm going to let you speak. Oh, you don't have a comment, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, secretary Triplet actually doesn't have any comments, I'm sorry, guys, we're trying to make the best of our technical difficulties, he doesn't actually have a comment this evening. Next, we have Vice President Bradley.
Good evening, everyone, to everyone in our community, thank you all for the public comments, it's good to come out and see the decision-making process, just wanted to say real quick that we are a diverse board, we come from diverse professions and backgrounds, and we each bring a unique perspective to the Board of Education. With that being said, let's all be about teamwork, no man isn't island, we will not all agree on everything, but let's find that middle ground so that we can better serve our students and our community. Lastly, let's remember to listen to each other, let's not just be the only one in the room talking, let others have their ideas and viewpoints as well, so that way we can have, be listening to learn. With that being said, I'm glad that the students are back at the high school, and praying that everyone stays safe in the pandemic, that's all I have to say for the evening.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you, vice president Bradley. Um, so I believe we've heard from everyone, so I'm the last person, I'm not going to be as long-winded as normal. Just want to thank the Board of Education for being flexible with our schedule this evening, so that we can get the items of business that were on our agenda handled prior to April. I appreciate all of the input, um, provided by our board and our administrative team. But I also appreciate the, uh, due diligence, as one of our board members likes to use, that each person contributes to ensuring that we are, um, doing good board business. I know that we all may have a different viewpoint on how to, uh, get to our destination of reviving and increasing the academic success of our district, but as long as that is the outcome that we all are seeking, I know that we'll get in a place where we are in agreement of what that journey looks like, so just thankful to everyone for being flexible with our schedules, I hope that everyone continues to um, be safe in this current time, and also thankful that our children, uh, at the high school were able to return to in-person learning, and excited to hear more about what that looks like and how our students are feeling about that in the near future. So with that being said, I'm all done with my, um, comments, the next item on our agenda is to move into a closed session to discuss a legal opinion under section eight H of the Open Meetings Act. And it is the legal opinion provided by Park Hill, Hill P L C. Can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss the legal opinion?
I make a motion to move into closed sessions to discuss the legal opinion.
Is there a second of support?
I second it. I second it.
So the motion has been made by vice president Bradley and supported by trustee Buchanan. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, secretary Triplett, can you please call the roll for the closed session vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
No.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Trustee Buchanan, we need you to unmute and give your vote, please.
Yeah. Hello, yeah, I said, yeah. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Trustee Triplett, I mean, secretary Triplett, yes. Motion carried.
Okay, so we are going to, um, need for our tech to get us sent to the breakout room for closed session. As mentioned earlier to our community members, we're going to be in closed session, we don't anticipate that we're going to be in there extremely long, but um, when we come out of closed session, we're going to be adjourned. Um, so if you'd like, you all would like to log off for the evening, you're more than welcome to do so, or you can wait until we, um, come back for adjournment, so we're going to enter closed session at six oh four P M. End the closed session and return to open session?
I make a motion to end the closed session and go into, um, open session.
Is there a second or support?
Support.
Okay, so the okay, so trustee Bowens beat you, uh, trustee Buchanan. So vice president Bradley, motion to end closed session and return to open session as of seven twenty-four P M. Um, and that was supported by trustee Bowens. Um, secretary Triplett, can you please call the vote for that motion to return to open session?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice president Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplett, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so we are returning to open session as stated as of seven twenty-four P M. Um, trustee Bowens, was there anything additional that you needed to say prior to us going into adjournment?
Yes, I would like to file a motion in regards to Denise Thomas and reconsidering the previous vote for Ms. Thomas, and that we direct the superintendent to schedule a meeting.
Okay, I believe you're referencing, um, Ms. Diane Thomas, is that correct?
Yes, I, Ms. Diane Thomas, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there a support of that motion?
I second that motion.
Okay. Okay, so a motion has been made by trustee Bowens and supported by trustee Rocket Martin that we reconsider the previous board decision on Diane Thomas. Any questions, comments, or concerns before secretary Triplett calls the vote?
I have a concern that her name was mentioned, and before it just was a staff person, uh, staff report made.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, secretary Triplett, can you please?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice president Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
No.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Secretary Triplett? No. Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next on our agenda is adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, it's currently seven twenty-eight P M?
I moved that the oh, go ahead, go ahead Lou.
I support that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so a motion has been made by trustee Buchanan and supported by trustee Rocket Martin. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding adjournment? Secretary Triplett, can you please call the roll for the vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice president? Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Secretary Triplett, yes. Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so this meeting is officially adjourned at seven twenty-nine P M, I want to thank you all for your time, um, this evening, and if we have any additional follow-ups that are required, I will send out that information regarding any additional scheduling. Um, so I hope you all have a good evening, and thank you, everyone, and that remains on time.
Thank you.